Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament. The minutes, all in favor? Opposed? Claims, any questions on the claims? And a motion and a second to approve the claims for May 3rd? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we have to adjourn council?
Yep, the old council.
Okay, so we need a motion for that?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to adjourn the existing council, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now we're going to call, to order the new council?
Correct.
Okay. And starting out, we have an oath of office for Alderman Call.
Aye. Aye. Dave Call. Having been elected to the office of Alderman, Ward Two, within said city of Brandon, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and all local ordinances of said city of Brandon, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, perform all duties of my said office of Alderman according to the law.
Congratulations, Dave. Welcome again. All right, so a call to order, so now we need to do roll call for the new council. Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, and Parliament. Okay, so now we need approval of the new agenda.
Motion to approve.
Circle.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, now we have election of the council president and the council vice president.
Can I make a motion just to have the same as last year? Okay, I make that motion to keep Barb as president and Dana as vice president?
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Maybe. No, no offense to you, Dan, I was just talking about myself. Okay, anything on the consent calendar?
Yes, the drawing for seating.
Oh, drawing for seating, yes. Do you guys want to switch around?
I might.
Are you lonesome down there?
I don't care.
We have done it, we haven't done it for a number of years, so we could do it and then do it after the meeting, so we don't have to like pick up stuff?
Yeah, you can move out.
Okay.
I, I, I really, I was kidding.
Oh, you were kidding, okay, well, what's the council's preference?
I'm good.
Okay. Jim? Okay.
I can go sit next to Dave if he wants.
You can come up here. If you want, if you're comfortable, we can move him out too.
That sounds good. Dave can be between us.
Four-year-old seat.
Where were you before? Over there?
Somewhere over here.
One, two, three, and either side. I'm sure he likes to sit back in the right there.
Don't worry about it later.
Yep, all right, so we're staying, we're not going to draw, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't hear a loud feeling for that, so, okay. Consent calendar.
Don't have anything.
All right, this is the time for visitors and timed items, if you would like to address the council on anything, um, we ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and turn the microphone on. Anybody for public comments?
Hi, good evening, my name is Heidi Jorgensen, 317 West Hackberry Street. I am here tonight with two things for your consideration as a taxpayer and a lifelong resident of this community. First, I would like to publicly thank Public Works, Christina, the Police Department, the golf course staff, for all the work that they put into getting things ready for council yesterday and the parade. Everything was there, everything was ready, I had the privilege of riding with Councilman Jorgensen and distributing candy, and after 14 months of enduring a pandemic, I think that there was a lot of really positive energy in the community to do and have something normal. And I know that city staff was instrumental in getting those things ready, so I did want to say thank you to them. The second thing that I want to talk to you about tonight is that I noticed on the agenda that you have a third opportunity tonight to appoint an interim mayor. I had previously emailed all of the council with my support of Chuck Parsons, but after the last meeting where we deadlocked again on that, I felt it was really important to stand in front of you, in front, as a taxpayer, and share publicly my support of Chuck. He has an incredible financial background, he spoke at the last council meeting and talked about some of his ideas for revenue generation, which I think, as I attend these meetings, I hear very clearly, is something that council and city staff need to explore. Chuck has very recent and deep understanding of how the city of Brandon works, because he's been part of planning and zoning, because he has been part of this governing body, he is an incredible asset to city staff and to all of you as council. He has been a reputable leader, he served as a leader of one of the major financial institutions in this area, he is a highly qualified candidate to lead this city for a year. On the other side of that, I wanted to also echo, as a taxpayer, that I have some concerns that Councilman Parliament will not recuse himself from the vote. And please, I really want to be clear, I understand it's not about the money, I understand that it's never been about the money. For me, I think it is the idea of that anyone out in the community could potentially think that it might be, that's the integrity piece for me. I think I look at it and see, uh, you know what, when I recuse myself, this is an opportunity for me to say out loud that I'm going to step away from this, and whatever happens is the decision of the people. And my concern comes when you receive legal advisement, when you receive counsel and advisement from a peer that says it really would be best practice to recuse yourself, and you don't, the question I start to ask myself is what else might you not want to listen to legal counsel on? What other peer advisement might you disregard? So for me, as I sit in the audience, that's what it becomes for me. And then when other people continue to support and put up this idea, that this is the direction we should go, I wonder about that. I have yet to hear a substantive reason as to why Chuck is not a great candidate. So tonight I'm asking you, as a council, when it comes time to that, for that spot on the agenda, to really think about, I understand Chuck is highly qualified, so I understand why Councilman Cullen, Councilman Fish, and Councilman Jorgensen continue to back a highly qualified candidate, I understand that. So I really, my encouragement is for you to take a look at that candidate experience, to really reflect on how do you want to be seen as a group for the next year until we move forward for that general election, and everybody can cast a vote for whichever candidate they want, including the candidates, they can vote for whoever they want in the general election. But until that time, my encouragement is for you to zoom out and look at the fact that you have a really great leader standing at the back of this room who is ready to serve. Thank you.
Hello, TJ Cameron, 2821 East Daybreak Circle, Brandon. I just wanted to address a couple of things, first of all, I wanted to thank everybody, as just said, for the parade this weekend, it was fantastic, thank you for those that participated, thanks to the VFW for encouraging it, police, city council, and all the staff and anybody else involved in facilitating, you know, such a great event. I had a float and it was just amazing to see the smiles on people's faces, and it was awesome, so thanks, everybody, for that. The next thing I did want to address was, I'm going to ask again for your support for the mayoral appointment, although I haven't had an opportunity to be voted on, I just wanted to let you know I'm here and I'm continuing to be committed to the process, as I have been for the last several years, as you may know. Couple other things that I have commented on in the past is, I wanted to call out tonight, a couple of recent, you know, a couple of polls by our city-sponsored, well, our city-appointed newspaper, I would call it, the Brandon Valley Journal, in the recent poll had 185 votes, which is one of their top, you know, 10% from what I could find of turnout to their polls, and the public voted 39% for myself at 72 votes, 29% for one of the other candidates, and 32% for the other candidates, so thought that that's an important factor that you should consider as far as public input. Also, there was a poll when Mr. Lundberg and I applied for the appointment, and 306 people voted in that, so nearly double, and I called this out once before, but in that particular poll that was also by the Brandon Valley Journal, I received 51% of the support as me being the candidate that should be appointed at 155 votes, and Paul received 42% at 128. So as we talk about, you know, listening to residents and the taxpayers and everybody else involved in this process, I'm just going to ask for your reconsideration again. I did want to bring to the attention, and I think most of you received this in the council packet, but just in case, since it's been a few meetings, I wanted to bring to attention the letter of reference I received from the Brookings County Sheriff, Marty Stanwick, so he wasn't only the sheriff of Brookings County, that's where I grew up, Marty was also a police officer in Brookings, the city of Brookings, for well over a decade, matter of fact, he may have even retired there, I can't remember the exact tenure, but then he was elected to be the, the sheriff, and I think that Brookings has a lot to offer as far as advice and partnerships for a community like us that are growing, I grew up there, I see a lot of similarities that we could work together with them on, and Marty's letter read, "I'm writing this letter on behalf of TJ Cameron, it's my understanding he's interested in the position of interim mayor for the city of Brandon, I knew TJ as a youth growing up in Brookings, being raised by a single mother, he had the drive and desire to make something of himself. While in school, he participated in sports, was involved in the Brookings Optimist Events, and frequently volunteered in classroom and special needs living facilities. TJ graduated from high school in three years on an accelerated education program placing him in the top 10% of his class. He also served on student council and helped special needs students in school. I followed TJ after he left Brookings and am delighted to see him succeed in retail sales. His personal, personality, drive, willingness to help people, and the community involvement would make him an excellent choice for interim mayor of Brandon." So I did include that with my packet a couple of meetings ago, but thought that I should make mention of it again, not all the residents see the full packet. Further, I recently, I'm about to go into a new venture, and I received some letters of reference, and these are, just to be clear, these are not related specifically to the position of mayor, but I thought, just for the point of integrity, I'd like to share some of the comments that were made in a couple of the letters. To whom it may concern, I wouldn't be, I couldn't be happier to recommend TJ Cameron for a CEO position of, and I'll leave the company's name out, "I have known TJ for approximately seven years, while living in the same neighborhood, I can certainly say that he's a person of exemplary character. TJ has been a very active citizen in Brandon, he's involved in local government and works for the betterment of the community. He is extremely open to hearing other people's thoughts and concerns, remaining professional and respectful, he has the qualities one would want in a leadership role. TJ has owned and operated a firework stand in Brandon for several years, he has employed two of my own children and other youth and others in the neighborhood. He has been a great mentor to my daughter, teaching her how to interact with customers from a young age. She has an abundance of confidence, and we believe it is because TJ gave her the opportunity to develop her people skills. Those who interact with TJ are drawn to his charismatic personality, kind and warm-hearted nature. Whenever there's any need for volunteers in town, TJ would step up without the slightest hesitation if needed, eager to serve in any way he could. I highly recommend TJ for this position, I have no doubt, no doubt he'd be a strong addition to the leadership team." And then the final one that I wanted to share a few comments from was, again, not related specifically to this role, but to a CEO role, which I account very similar to a mayoral position. "I worked as a paralegal in Sioux Falls, I've known TJ Cameron for about four years, and been repeatedly impressed," by the way, that first letter was a Brandon resident, this one is not, "been repeatedly impressed with his business mind and determination. TJ's skill set transcends so many different industries and business sectors, he has a mind for management, sales, finance, and communication, just to name a few. TJ's abilities truly shine when he can lead a team toward a unified vision. He is an instant friend to anyone he meets and easily inspires others to join his mission, whether it be through community initiatives, startup businesses, or turning around struggling groups. TJ has mentored up, up-and-coming entrepreneurs in his community, and was his wife's biggest cheerleader as she became a new small business owner in the middle of a pandemic. Please carefully consider TJ Cameron, he would bring unparalleled enthusiasm to an So I just wanted to share those with you and ask again for your support. I did want to comment on something that wasn't planned on my agenda, but because there was a recent comment about, about Jack, I wanted to say, as a Ward Three resident, I'm happy that my, that my representative from my ward are getting the votes necess, and are able to be represented. I feel like if, if Jack didn't vote, he wouldn't be, he wouldn't be, we wouldn't have fair representation for Ward Three, so I appreciate that you're up here casting your vote, and I know that myself, and I'm pretty sure Chuck would both vote for ourselves if we could, and Chuck's also a very great contributor, but I'm just glad that I do have both of my votes in Ward Three. You know, Chuck could have had a vote at this table for this particular appointment, but Chuck decided not to run again after his term of council, so I think that should be considered, he's a fantastic contributor to our community, but he also would have had the opportunity to vote, should he had decided to, you know, rerun for that position and chose not to, and, and I know things change, but thank you for representing Ward Three, appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public hearing.
Just water conservation committee.
Okay. Hey, Kevin, come on up.
Good evening, Kevin Smith, 521 East Switchgrass Trail, here representing the Water Conservation Committee, keep my comments brief. In 2018, the Water Conservation Committee was formed, and initially our efforts were really to educate the public about the need to conserve water outdoors during the summer, peak day usage, it was a kind of a rallying cry for us initially. A year later, through support of the city council, we were able to secure funding to incentivize water conservation, and thus created the Water Smarter Campaign, which is not, not a message to just simply use less water, it's a message to use water smarter, as the name entitles. So if you look on the city's website, you can see the incentive program that exists today, including rebates for rain sensors, irrigation timers, rain barrels. A year after that, 2020, the Water Conservation turned its attention indoors. We've, we understand we need to continue to discuss and educate the public regarding the need to water smarter during the summer, when our peak day usage can sometimes double what our average day use is, but also to take into account those utility customers who would like to participate somehow financially in an incentive program, but they've said, oh, we don't, we don't use sprinklers, we don't water our yards so that, you know, the outdoor water conservation measures don't apply to some of, some of the residents. So the committee brought forward, about a year ago at this time, a request, request to expand the incentive program to include toilets, which have been wildly successful. I think we've, we've rebated almost 85 toilets over the past year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but this is an ongoing program, great, great example of where people can employ water conservation without even thinking about it, just by using those devices. Which brings us to this year, so we've, we've gone through different, different aspects of water conservation, outdoor to indoor, and now what we're proposing tonight is to expand it once again, the incentive program, to include energy efficient or Energy Star washing machines, which can use up to 30 to 40% less water and energy than, than typical older, older model washing machines. So over the last three years, the goals of the Water Conservation Committee and the Water Smarter Program, incentivize, educate, and hopefully, you know, explain to our residents the value of water, and show some of that value back by providing these rebate incentives. Third part of the stool of water conservation includes enforcement, so that's where we've been over the last three years, this is where we're at today, what we're requesting, but looking forward, especially now, first week of May, we've had one warm day, we know people are starting to use more outdoor water, so it's a good reminder also tonight that the city of Brandon has a lawn watering schedule, odd even, no lawn watering between the hours of 10 a.m. and 6 p.m., and our public education efforts, whether we're at Sunshine Foods, or whether we're at the Brandon Bash, or participating with others, like yesterday at the Loyalty Day Parade, our committee really is committed to public education, but we also are asking for the continued financial support from the city council for the Water Smarter incentive program, and to support expanding it to include clothes washers. So that concludes my report.
I just want to take one second and just thank this gentleman here, because he's our leader of the committee, Barb and I both have the privilege of serving on the committee with Kevin, he's insanely organized, dedicated, and knowledgeable, he puts up with some of our craziness from a few of our members, myself included, um, thank you, Kevin, you're just, you're definitely driving the committee, and the results are a large part you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Really echo, echo that, Kevin, thank you, and to all the committee members, I mean, these are volunteers, they just are meeting and working together, and all on a volunteer effort to try to help us conserve water in Brandon, it's amazing. Do we need something? What do we need to do?
Yeah, two things. One, a motion to approve the waters, the amendment to the Water Smarter incentive program to include the high efficiency washers, and then you've got a drinking water week proclamation.
Kevin, I did, when, when do you want this effective?
Uh, I would say it's effective upon publication. I think that's what we did with the last resolution, or at least the, when it was effective.
April 1st, last year.
Actually, it would become effective upon passage of the motion.
So just do it, okay.
Yes.
There we go. What is the rebate for the, the wash machines you said?
Yes.
What is that exactly?
It would be up to $125 back for a single washing machine, up to three, so we don't know if there will be rental property owners who are interested in replacing some of theirs, but if you're, if you're a Brandon Utilities customer, and you're going to buy a new washing machine, and it's Energy Star rated, and if you go onto any retailer, it will say whether or not a washing machine's Energy Star rated, you can receive back, and this is not in the, in the form of a check, it is taken off your next utility bill, and it takes, I don't know how long it's been taking to get those processed for other items, but, but essentially you get $125 back if you buy a new Energy Star washing machine.
Thank you.
I do want to just kind of say, this is amazing program, I know my household for one has taken advantage of the rain barrel, like we got one in the front yard last year, love it, so then we got another one for the backyard, and I can say, even though we don't think we had a lot of rain, we've been using that to water like our tulips and stuff like that, and we haven't had to use any of our water, it's just the rainwater, so, yeah, thank you so much, kind of echoing what Barb and Dana had said, it is amazing program, you're creating awareness, I never really thought about water, other than turning it on, but now you think twice about that stuff, and it's all because of this group and what you've done for the community, so, yeah, thank you, I think this is great.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Kevin, thanks for coming, appreciate always the update. And now I have the privilege of reading a proclamation about water, "Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public service are in some way related to access to safe water; and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend; and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore be it resolved by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of our city, I do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 8th, 2021, as Drinking Water Week." And I'm sure we'll get some good publicity in the paper, right? All right, thank you very much. I took great pride last year, and every time I drove by a lawn that was dry, and that was not green, because I felt like that was the efforts of the Water Conservation Committee, people didn't feel the need that they had to have a green lawn, because it was, you know, dry last year, so, anyway, all right, moving on. Thank you, Kevin, thank you, the committee, Dana has been a stalwart member of the committee, Tammy's been very involved with the committee too, you've done a lot of work with them, and you guys were just out, tell us about the garbage, Tammy, cleaning the highway, because I wasn't able to be there.
Yep, we did the adopt a highway last weekend, that's kind of a joint project with the county, it's really their program, but we signed up to clean up the garbage twice a year from Six Mile Road all the way to Sioux Boulevard, so this year we had over 50 people attend, and not all of them were even from Brandon, so a couple Girl Scout groups, a couple Geocachers, lots of people just coming out with their kids, so it was a good turnout.
So, thank you very much for organizing that, and if you want to know more about geocaching, Tammy's the expert on that. And if you want to know more about Geocaching, Tammy's the expert on that. It's quite an interesting program. Okay, we're going to go on to old business with the mayor vacancy appointment. Do we have any discussion? Or, I guess we have to have a motion first before we have discussion? Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion.
I would make a motion for Chuck Parsons.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
If not, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Clark?
Nay.
David?
Nay.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Nay.
All right. Um, city administrator, what do you propose we do?
Um, you know, like I said before, it'll stay on the agenda until appointment is made or until the next municipal election next April. Um, if you wanted to, we could certainly re-advertise for any interest, if there's any other candidates or applicants that would be interested in, in submitting.
I guess, I guess I'm being short-sighted here. I should ask, are there other motions in this? We're on this subject, so is there another motion to be considered?
I make a motion for Jack Parliament for mayor.
Second. Okay, discussion?
I do want to say one thing. TJ kind of brought this up, and I was thinking the same thing. Um, I know last week it was mentioned that the other two candidates didn't really have a vote. Um, that's true, but Jack is also elected as a, this governing body to have a vote. And if he feels, along with some other, uh, council members, that he's the best for this job, um, I don't see why he can't have a vote. That's what he was elected by the people of Brandon to have. Um, the other thing is, I just want to say, I feel like former mayor Lombard got this city on a good path, moving forward, being more, as a growing community, I think for too long, we sat idle and was more reactive instead of proactive. And so I feel like what Lombard has set into place and that path we're going down, Jack is the excellent candidate to keep us going there, moving forward, what we can do best for this city, um, and helping us grow and be more of that proactive approach. And so there's more why, I mean, to me, I think Jack is the ideal candidate for this. He has the experience, he has the knowledge, he has the passion, and he has the time to be able to do that. So that's my way of, why he's with Jack.
Other discussion? Okay, let's do the roll call, please.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nay.
Jorgensen?
Nay.
Cole?
Nay.
Parliament?
I had to think. All right, um, that motion fails. Are there other motions to consider for this position? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the golf course.
You've got a list for some more part-time seasonal help out at the golf course on page forty-nine.
Could we back up to that again? Are you looking for a possible motion to reopen it up for?
I, I don't know. I'm looking for whatever help we can get. Looking at our city attorney if she knows we should, is there something we should be doing?
Um, the statute just, and I don't have it in front of me, says to appoint as reasonably or as soon as possible, so...
As soon as applicable, as soon as practical.
Practical. So, uh, there's not a legal process by which you have to open it up, advertise, there's not a process that you have to use, but we have a process that we have used. That's for you to decide you want to follow that process, but it's just a, sort of, a process. I, I don't, it's, it's not a legal issue.
Okay.
The legality can be, until you have the necessary votes, you can't appoint, and it's, that goes on for nine months to a month, or nine months and then you're like...
Now, just for the interest of discussion, I would make a motion that we reopen it up for, uh, other applicants, in case there's anybody else that's interested in, that may be able to garner four votes.
Is there a way we could shorten the timetable if we do that? So it's not...
I'd have to look at the calendar.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, discussion.
Yeah, I would just be curious about the, um, the timetable, too. Since it already was posted, do we really necessarily have to have, I think last time wasn't it month or twice?
Yeah, it's usually two weeks before it's passed.
And there's five Mondays in May, too, so, I mean, probably as soon as it be the June seventh.
I, I guess, I guess they, we, we have... A process, but it's for you to decide what you want to do, because that process is not an ordinance or resolution. It's a process you've used for fairness, so whether or not you believe you should publish or continue on with that, since you've already gone through that process, that's for you guys to make that decision. So you can set what it is you want to do, you can follow that process if it's not an ordinance, or set something different.
So what I'm hearing, Lisa, you said if we wanted, if the council chooses, you could reopen it up and say, "Application's due next Monday," if we wanted to?
Yeah.
Um, just because we did the two weeks in the past doesn't mean we have to do it going forward? Okay, I'm just curious.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to reopen, correct? Did? Republish or...
Yeah.
So when we republish, though, the same candidates can reapply if they choose to, obviously, right?
Certainly, uh, or we can...
Or there'll be more that...
See if there's any additional people that have rethought this and...
And then that, like you said...
Or do we have to go through the whole application process again with the current ones?
It, it's your process to do, so that there's no requirement. And you could say that you consider the three that have already applied to, you know, you don't have to interview and they don't have to reapply. Um, you can amend your motion to be a little more specific of whether to include that they have to reapply, or you want to include them, and then maybe a timetable.
Yeah, I, I would, I would frame it in the, in the sense that the current three applicants would not have to reapply, just to see if there's any other interest out there. And, uh, you know, maybe someone would come forward that would be appealing.
What's your timetable?
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with a week, two weeks, uh...
Ideally, I would say I would want to make sure we could vote on it on the next council meeting, right? Or no? Do you want to wait till June or May seventeenth?
Well, are you going to have interviews? You know, what's the process you're using?
Normally, I thought we had interviews during the briefing, which could be done on the thirteenth, and then we could vote on the seventeenth, don't you think, just to kind of...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You want to re...
You certainly could, but if you want to re-advertise, the paper doesn't come out till the twelfth.
Oh.
So setting a deadline for the tenth is going to be, it won't get in any paper.
Well, the paper, well, I guess advertisement, but I'm sure the paper will be out here and this com, this council meeting will be reported on this Wednesday, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. So we might not have a formal add, but...
No, it's called a special meeting, because we need another...
Okay, so what are the parameters of the motion?
Again, we open it up, uh, again, we could do the, if, if it's approved, we could, uh, and if anybody put in for it, we could do the interviews, like she states, on the, uh, was that the thirteenth?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and it'd be ready for consideration at the next vote.
On the seventeenth?
On the seventeenth.
So your applications would be due by when? The twelfth or...
Twelfth, yeah, that's fair.
Everybody got that?
So that's your friendly amendment? That you're going to have somebody second?
I second.
Okay, good. Okay, let's take a roll call vote on that.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Nay.
Jorgensen?
Nay.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Hey, we got to vote through. Okay, move on. All right, so we'll re-advertise, see if there are other folks interested. We hope that the candidates that were interested previously are still interested, and we will go from there.
But they don't have to reapply, they're already in.
They're, unless they bow out, I suppose.
Okay.
They're already in, okay.
They're already in.
Okay, all right, everybody clear on that? Okay. Okay, um, going now to the golf course.
Motion to approve seasonal staff. Second.
Got a motion to approve the seasonal staff, which is listed on page forty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then we have the bank stabilization project. Tammy?
Yeah, I Meg is our consultant for the bank stabilization project out by the golf course. Um, this project is taking longer than expected due to weather and some site access issues. Uh, we hope that it's another couple weeks and they'll be cleaning it up and moving out. Um, there has been more FEMA discussions and phone calls and kind of a lot more work on our engineer. For those reasons, they've asked for a twenty-five thousand, um, amendment to their construction administration proposal.
And you're in agreement with that?
I am.
And this is like a max?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Yep, this is an hourly, not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few comments. Um, I, I have a hard time with a company doing a public bid, they submit the bid, it's approved, and then turn around and come back at a later date, uh, and ask for additional money, uh, and asking for additional money outside of a change order. It's a change order, uh, fully understandable, but, uh, they bid it, they knew what they were getting into when they bid it, and personally, I think they should be held to that.
So this is our consultant, our engineer. They don't bid the work. We have a contract with them for a certain amount of hours for different tasks within their contract. So they have been doing work outside of that. We don't do change orders for consultants. Contractors, the actual ones that are building the project, we bid that work, and then we would have a change order if they requested any additional funds.
Okay, I understand, Tammy, Tammy, but did they also submit their, uh, fee request, let's say, or, uh, if you want to term it for their construction administration?
Right, so we do an estimated amount of hours, um, and they've gone above and beyond those hours. So that's why they're requesting this amendment. So the amendment's kind of like the change order that we would use for contractors.
Good. Well, I'm, I'm still not in favor of it, but I'm not going to, uh, you know, draw a line in the sand, I don't like, per se, but, um, I think they should have been, been able to foresee that it was going to be, uh, more than what, what the original was, like thirty-seven thousand, correct? Thirty-two or thirty-seven?
Yep.
Yeah. And to add an additional twenty-five on to it, I think is a little bit out of line. I think they should be able to foresee that. That's just my comment.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, um, we better take a roll call on that.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Nay.
Fish?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Thanks for your comments, Jack. Going on to, um, park department, looks like we need to hire some staff on page fifty-five.
And, and just make sure, if, for the motion that it's continued upon them passing their certifications, since some of them are, are waiting yet to get theirs.
Motion to approve contingent on certification. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, I'm sorry, it's on page fifty-six. Um, for pool staff, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Christina, you got some pool software update for us?
Sure. Our current pool software is, um, going to be obsolete in October. So I've looked at a few different options and recommending that we go with ActiveNet, which is, um, really oversees our current one, just kind of a little more expensive one at the time. When we purchased our original one, it was just a, um, just a cost-effective one at the time that we purchased it to get us something going for an online program. Um, it's been utilized a lot for the online swim lessons and memberships, so it's been a good program, but there are some, um, items in the program that aren't efficient, so moving to a new one will be good. So my recommendation would be to migrate over to the new software, ActiveNet. Um, it is eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents to do that. Um, I'm recommending we just use can budget, the budgeted contingency fund to do that.
Is that a once and done, or is there like an annual maintenance fee?
They have annual maintenance fees, but they don't change from what we're currently paying. Those are locked in for six years.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve the new software for the pool. Any discussion? Thank you for doing the research on it, Christina.
Yeah, Christina, I was just going to follow up on the fee. So what is the annual fee then?
Uh, forty-two hundred.
Oh, okay.
And that's included in the park budget?
Yeah, yep.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pool improvement project, the TSP, TSP contract.
Yep, TSP is our architect on this project. Um, they are requesting an additional twenty-five thousand for construction administration fees. Um, a lot of that is due to we added the existing building and doing some repairs there. Um, they've kind of been doing all the coordination for that.
Go for it, Jack.
So do we have a cost estimate on, on the actual improvement?
That's the next line item.
Okay, can you jump ahead for me?
It's sixty-eight thousand.
And twenty-five thousand to construction management bet?
Yeah, it includes some of the other stuff, too. They've been out of fee for quite a while.
Wow. I think they're around this, I saw a lot.
There's, especially...
Yeah, that's, that's really a high rate for construction management.
And it is hourly, not to exceed, and there are a lot of shop drawings and little details with the existing building, like we had to go through light covers, and we had to go through the colors of shingles and paint samples, and all those things add up.
Yeah, that's still, uh, what percent of the contract, typically construction admin, that I've seen, twenty-five is just top in many cases. Uh, this has got what, forty? I'm not sure, I didn't do the math, but that just seems like a lot for a, for that amount of work.
What are our options? I mean, if we didn't approve it, what happens? Can you counter them? Can you go back and say...
It's an hourly, not to exceed, so they're only going to bill whatever they give. I mean, we could say fifteen thousand, and then they work up until fifteen thousand, and then stop. And we'll say that I could stand off there and do some... And we'll say that I could stand up there and do this work, but I don't have time to do that, so... The option is to have the architect do it.
Okay, any other discussion, if now we've got a motion on the floor? All in favor? Don't we have a motion?
I don't think we have one.
Oh, sorry, okay, you gotta watch me, sorry. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion, we'll put it that way.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Is there more discussion, so we, I had that backwards, I apologize.
You said that they, they have been out of fees?
They are, I think they're about thirteen thousand over already, so-
Does that, does that involve the previous work?
Yeah.
Area?
Yep, and I think their construction admin part was pretty low to begin with, but they've been good to work with, they're doing all the pay apps and change orders and putting all that paperwork together, so they do quite a bit.
Isn't that typically included in construction admin?
Right.
Yeah, well, they're doing their job in all of this.
Yep.
Brian, do you have any input you wanna?
No, I, no. The renovations to the existing building weren't included, this also includes the work for the, uh, change order, for the caulking, um, I mean, adds a little bit to the construction cost, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things that... Yes, I would love to hold consultants to a, a set thing, but when they, when they bid a project, there's, there are unknowns that come up, so it's, it's pretty difficult to hold them to a number when you change the scope of the project.
I just question, do you think we're kind of getting, I don't know, like, would this be happening in a private business? I'm sensing that, right, like, so I don't know, is this typical for them to do to, like, a, a city, like, to public, to think that they can kind of, I don't know, pull their weight around and say, pay this, or we're not, you know, kind of, I don't know?
If they exceed the work that was originally quoted or, or, or specked, in lack of other terms, yeah, it's normal. It's not unusual, um, you know, I'd also venture to guess what happened in the private sector. If I bid a job and I'm a consultant or a contractor and the, and the price is, you know, I'm up to my hours, or what I quoted, if you look at, um, I'll use an example, Housing Today. Talking to contractors, their bids from their suppliers are good for a week, that's it. Um, you know, and if I'm, if I quote somebody to build a house, and the lumber prices are going up astronomically lately, what are you gonna do? You know, and they're going up, you know, they're up, well, OSB board's up from eight to thirty-six bucks a sheet over last year. So prices change, more work is involved from time to time on contracts than originally anticipated. You can certainly deny it, uh, if you want to, and then it's up to the contractor if they want to continue working for us. Because they don't have to. They've reached their contract.
And Tammy, you mentioned you standing out there, i- is that something our intern could do?
No, I mean, a lot of this is gonna be watching hardware and doors and lighting and, I mean, he's not gonna know anything about painting, no. And I got him on doing a million other things, so...
And it still gets back to, you want the people doing the inspections on, that are the people that designed it.
Right.
All right, let's move forward, we're gonna, we, we do have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you, all right, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Nay.
All right, motion passes, moving on to change order number four, Tammy?
This one was previously approved already, so it's more of an FYI for council. Um, council approved up to a hundred thousand dollars for that existing building, we got it down to about that sixty-eight thousand. Um, and then it has some in there too for that repair work for the existing pool. So it's just kind of cleaning those all up and having the official form for it.
But we do need a motion for it? Or it's a, already approved?
It's already approved.
Okay, it's already approved, okay. Pay application, eight and nine?
Yep, pay application number eight's for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, and pay application number nine's for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one.
And then are we about done?
Um, the construction itself is about done, they're doing some final painting and some touch-up stuff, but yes, okay.
Okay, we have a motion for those pay apps?
Hold on. Second.
Motion is second for the pay apps for the pool, any discussion? Not, all in-
Yep, real quick, Tammy, what's, where are we at on the total then? I'm, am I, I'm not finding it, real quick here, I know it's here, but, the two sixty-two and change? Am I right, no, that can't be right.
No.
That's, that's just a-
Current contract price is one-three.
Original contract is one point three.
Seven-one.
One point three something?
I'm seeing it on page sixty-seven, Jack, under discussion.
Are you asking for the to, the contract amount, are you asking?
Yeah, well, contract amount and/or, you know, where we act, uh, on the
Because the exis-
Pay applications, how much we paid out so far?
Oh, the existing contract was one point three million, and then we had a change orders of thirty thousand, plus we'll have these, this change order of sixty-eight plus the fifty-one hundred.
So, math-wise, one point seven? Or no?
No.
No lie, right?
Yeah, it's about one point four-ish.
Okay.
Okay, um-
Just a second, Brian, so our original, um, was like one point six million?
Right, that was our original budget.
Now we're at one point four? Okay.
Put, that's construction cost plus the engineering. So I think we're over it just a little bit.
Okay, motion and a second is on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
But-
Opposed?
All right. Request for food truck?
Yep, AJ Mendon's requested a food truck at Van Buzker Park on August twenty-seventh for five to ten PM.
He is present if you have questions on this or the next item.
We invited?
Sure. Just move it along.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approve, any discussion, do you have any questions for AJ?
I, I have a question, because we have, okay, so it's a food truck, and then there's the, um, alcoholic beverage consumption, right? So how is it gonna be regulated to make sure there's no underage drinkers? Like, how is that gonna be controlled?
Would you like him to come up front?
Yeah, would you mind?
Come up front, AJ?
I understand, is this like a, kind of like a block party, so to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, but out of park.
But out of park, yeah, I know.
Uh, push the button right there.
There you go.
All right, now it worked. All right, it's, we're just doing the consumption, we're not providing the alcohol, it would be families bringing their own, so they're up, they're in charge of their own kids. I mean, so I bring my own in a cooler, my, and I'm in charge of my own responsibility, my kids not, just pull out a pop, not a beer. So it's, we're not providing anything, and then the food truck is for the families to go and buy their own too. We just felt this was, in the past, we did potluck in a garage with COVID and all that, we're like this a little bit, not sharing utensils, and then we also, we already had our own coolers on a private property that's, and watching our own kids there, so this is just moving into a park.
Okay. Got a motion, a second, any other questions for AJ? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have fun, thank you, thanks for coming. Okay, we've got a donation of a tract of land.
We, is that encompass both of those items? We had the-
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, it's the same, yeah, it's the same item. It's the same, it's good.
Okay, tract, donation of a tract of land.
Um, the developer of Sunrise Estates, TB and J, would like to donate tract six A to the city of Brandon. It does have, uh, sewer easement, and then it also has some drainage area for it. So it's not buildable piece of land.
And we just have to accept it, we need a motion to accept it?
No, we're gonna get it anyway.
Right? Vicky did, and, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second to accept a tract of land from TB and J, any questions on this? So, what happens, we just retitle it in our name at some point?
Correct, the, the, the motion will also include, um, signature approving the gifting agreement that's included in there as well on page seventy-nine, which just says they're gonna give us the property.
So, so that, first of all, that'd have to be amended, wouldn't it, this motion?
You can, or you could do a separate, separate motion too, that's fine.
Do I amend it? Or do we have to accept the gift, do the gift-
Yeah, to approve the gifting agreement.
Do we have to accept the gift of land?
In the agreement, or-
Through the gifting agreement.
The gifting agreement? Make that whole thing, or amend it all to that, as a second, okay. Okay, anything else, Jack?
Yeah, so what are our plans with it, with that piece of property?
Mostly just a drainage way, and then a sewer easement.
And then a trail.
Uh, yeah.
Future.
There's plans, there's development plans that show that we could put a shared use path along there. There's nothing in this, in the CIP to do that work.
Any, any other thing that's gonna be used that we could use that part?
This is a proposal from DGR engineers, um, for thirty-six thousand, five hundred to do the construction admin out in the Aspen Park project.
And this is for the second, um, entrance for the park?
Right, it won't be a connected second entrance, but this will get us the road to the south end, plus the utilities. Okay?
And our contract was for how much? With the DGR, or not with DGR, but the, uh, the roadway itself?
Uh, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, with site works.
Site works, one, yeah, okay.
All right, do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on Aspen Park Road project, any more discussion?
So, that's, see, that's, that's more like it in the construction admin of around ten percent, five hundred percent almost. That's more reasonable, in my opinion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, this has been a project, um, long discussed at Park Board, so they will be very happy to see us moving on that.
They're gonna get it done, they have no doubt about it.
All right, moving on to public safety, we've got the police report, inspections report, and we have a promotion. Hey, chief?
Um, so we had a hiring committee meet to, uh, fill, backfill an open lieutenant position within the police department. At the conclusion of that, which several members here were a part of, uh, the committee selected Sergeant Peterson for that position, he has been with us since April eleventh, two thousand sixteen. He had experience prior to that and was the supervisor prior to that as well. Uh, he quickly showed that, uh, he has a lot of knowledge and skill, and, uh, the department and the city is, is fortunate to have him. He was promoted to sergeant on October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and I'm requesting, and the hiring committee's requesting with your approval that he be promoted to the lieutenant position.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve? Sergeant Peterson, please to, any discussion?
I'd just have a quick question for Dave, are all these your hires?
Yeah.
All right.
Or I'll have to, at some point.
All right, well, good job then, I guess.
All right.
Well, he was hired originally by-
Phil.
By Phil, and then he left. Well, he left, and then I, I, I-
He coerced me.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Cole? Congratulations.
He is here if you'd like to hear from him. Would you like to say a word?
Yeah, yeah. I can do the speech, yeah.
Give this to you as well, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, just wanna say I take a lot of pride in serving this community, and, um, I look forward to the challenges of this position. We've got a great department from our chief down to our patrol officers, and, uh, I anticipate a lot of good things moving forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on. Just real quick, before we leave public safety, could we just, uh, maybe recognize the safest city? Would you mind, chief, talking to us about that?
So I believe this is the fifth year from that particular organization that has awarded Brandon, what's that?
I think it's more-
Is it? There's two of them, well, several years in a row, I thought it was five, but, see, she agrees with me, it's five. Several years, we've gotten that award of that distinction, um, we've talked over the years several times about, you know, it's, it's more about the community and the citizens themselves, um, and all the support they give to the city and the police department in allowing us to do our job. Um, another thing I'd like to say too is it's, you know, kind of goes beyond that, our amenities with our golf course, our parks department, uh, the streets department, and maintenance department with the safety and the lighting, and having a, you know, a clean community, so I think it's, you know, it's not, it kind of, we get questioned about it, and we get interviewed about it, but it's really the whole city itself, all the departments and the citizens, so we don't want to stand up here and take credit for something that we play a small part in. Any other?
You play a little more than a small part.
Well, yeah, but everybody plays a part, so we want to make sure everybody gets the recognition, 'cause we couldn't do it by ourselves, obviously, we wouldn't get that if it was just us, so, okay. You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to administration, so you need to walk me through this, Brian, what we need to do?
Uh, these are just, uh, normal annual appointments that require council approval, naming the official depositories that are listed there. Those are the folks that we invest funds in or have funds in. City Attorney is Vois Law Firm with Lisa Marso as their employee, being the primary contact. Brandon Valley Journal for a year, Park Advisory Committee, uh, for a four-year term with John Jacobson, P&amp;Z for a three-year term with Alyssa Tealy and Brian Heidebrink, Tim Jorgensen with the Brandon revolving loan fund for a two-year term, and then the always important and controversial Library Committee appointment, which council member Jorgensen, unless there are other volunteers-
City Attorney's Voice Law Firm, Lisa Marso, as their employee, being the primary contact, Brandon Valley Journal for a year, Park Advisory Committee, uh, for a four-year term with John Jacobson, P&amp;Z for a three-year term with Alyssa Teely and Brian Heidebrink, Tim Jorgensen with the Brandon Revolting Loan Fund for a two-year term, and then the always important and controversial Library Committee appointment with Councilmember Jorgensen, unless there are other volunteers.
Is that, is that, now, on the library, is that something that you want?
I read.
Have you ever checked a book out of there?
No.
Just curious.
I don't think that that is criteria for being on the library board, so, all right, so we can make a motion to.
I think, I think one motion to appoint all of those, or approve all of those appointments would be okay.
Okay, somebody do that, please.
I'll make that one.
All right, got a motion and a second for the administration, as we're reorganizing for a new year, um, seems like a strange time of the year, but it's after the election, so that's when we do it. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, got all of that done? And then there are mayoral appointments to the various, um, areas of the city?
Yep, liaisons, uh, council liaisons to each department, or, or, um, similar departments or functions, those are, those are the same as last year.
Except I got.
Except for the audit.
Yeah, I got rotated back on the audit committee, I'm a little crabby about that, but, yeah, yeah.
That rotates every year, and that would be, uh, Fish and Jorgensen this year.
Lucky us, okay, um, so we don't have to do anything there?
Nope.
All right, property tax abatements on page one.
Other than you make, need to say that you make those appointments.
Oh, okay, I'll make those appointments. Okay, that adequate?
Yep.
Thank you, all right, property tax abatements on page one oh two.
We have three property tax abatements, uh, submitted and approved by the county, all three of them are for veterans, disabled veterans.
The county vets those for us and, um.
Correct.
Yeah. Can help those people. Any discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, easements on page one oh five.
Midco's requesting two easements, um, one is along Parkview Boulevard, which is along the back property line of our lift station, and then our sec, the second one they're asking for is along our shared use path between Parkview Boulevard and Sioux Boulevard. And this is to allow them to put in those pedestals in the backyards, instead of putting them in the front yards near the street.
Motion a second to approve the easements for Midco, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. And we have a work report. And we have a wage adjustment.
Yep, foreman, works director, hooking. Move to approve.
Motion a second to approve, any discussion? Raleigh, how long have you been here?
Thirty-four years.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you for your service, Raleigh, we appreciate it, thank you very much, and all your guys. Okay, um, capital improvements plan.
You've got included two scenarios, uh, the first one is, is what was presented at the CIP work sessions, which includes, uh, operating expenditures increasing approximately six percent a year. And then we ran another scenario, uh, that increases those a four percent, included in that is new hires, or anticipated new hires over the next five years. So, if you look on page one twenty-one, it does free up some funding for park improvements, um, in twenty, in, in future years that weren't included in the original one.
Is the six percent historically what it's been, or what?
Took an average of the last five years, and it was six percent. It was like six point what, three something? That's why I presented the six percent.
Yeah.
So now, why do we have four then, like, is that even, even?
We, we tried to look and see what it would take, or projected costs, to get funding, um, in years three, four, and five for parks, and that's kind of where it ended up. Is it feasible, uh, you know, like I said in my memo to the council, these are all projections that may change up or down, um, you know, depending on bids, depending on, gas prices are a huge one for us. You know, so, just a reminder, these are all projections, so whichever one you want to include in the, in the CIP is, is fine, just that we, it's very important that we review it every year after the final numbers are known for the preceding year, so, you know, January, February-ish, that we sit down again and take a look at the next five years CIP stuff, including actual numbers from the preceding year, and that will tell us, are we up or down?
So Christina, you said, um, our expenses have averaged an increase of, did you say six point three percent, is that what you said, over the last five?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the exact point, but it was just a little above six percent.
Okay, and. Sales tax revenues, where, where were we at on that, sales tax revenues have increased. Uh, you may, no, off the top of head?
Property is five percent, sales tax is three.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that's in here somewhere. And just curious, what was it last year for, for both of those, do you know what they are?
Property tax? Last year to this year is four point one.
Yeah, four point, it's two point five eight plus one point seven CPI.
Turn that back again, please.
For property taxes, it was, uh, one point, from twenty to twenty-one, it's one point seven CPI plus two point five eight for growth, so, you know, a little over four, okay?
Play with numbers all day long, I mean, it's just a, or projections, property tax, ten-year average was five point one, a five-year average was five, so, I use five.
Okay.
You can use numbers.
So, um. So what do we need, we need a motion?
No, not right now, this is just preliminary again, to make sure, uh, the council's comfortable with what's being presented, and then we'll have a much more formal plan, um, before you consider the next, the next meeting with formal adoption.
I feel would feel more comfortable going with the six percent, if that's what's more realistic with those projections, that's what we'd last looked at in our last CIP work session.
But I thought we were going to ask our departments to, um, tighten the belt a bit, and so I think six is high, but, um. If we, if we go, I'll just get this out here, if we go with the six percent, and we have nothing for parks and the golf course in the last two years, I will not be voting in favor of it, so.
My thing is, I would just rather find the money and then make the projections off of that, rather than hope it's going to come from somewhere.
Okay, so we don't really need to do anything at this point, okay?
I agree with both of you. I really do, because I think we definitely need to keep money in the, in the parks. I'm, I'm optimistic that the sales tax revenues, uh, may do a little bit better, I think, uh, online sales with the new law, I think we're, that seems to be, uh, something that, we're getting the revenues from it, but it really hasn't been, um, widely discussed, uh, from the state level, all the way down to, um, here at the city, and, and I suspect, you know, everybody talks about how much growth we've had in the state and, and locally as well, uh, I think there's a lot more driving that than just, uh, um, possibly the fact that we could be coming out of COVID, so. Uh, I'm a little bit more optimistic on that, um, how does that equate to our, our budget, uh, it's hard to say, it's all numbers and it's all projections, but, um, I'd be willing to go a little bit on the high side on, on the, uh, increase in revenues, and likewise, I think we need to do, uh, not necessarily a, a major trim, but cogn, be cognizant of, of trying to save, um, at each department, and each department head doing what he can, uh, he or she can, um, to keep some of our expenses down, so, maybe we can get that down to maybe, instead of a, a four or a six, maybe we can get it down to five, and I think, um, all of those, uh, factors can contribute to a, a little bit more palatable budget, in my opinion.
Sales tax, Christina, like, every quarter, do we get the?
Monthly.
We get monthly.
Oh, we get monthly, but have we, have we seen an increase?
Yeah, so far, it's, um, up from last year, um, sales tax is a tough one to determine.
But we, we are.
It's all over the board, I mean, one year we've had one point four, one year we've had seven, one year we've had four, one year we've had zero, so, it's a really tough one to crack on what it's going to be. Am I hoping it's better than three? I'm hoping, but I, I think there's a recession coming too, at some point, that. Sales tax is an unknown. So far.
All right, let's move on to the warranty proposal from.
One thing, if, if, between now and the next meeting, if you want to give me some input, so then, you know, we'll, we'll present whichever plan is the consensus of the council, so if you want to give me some input between now and the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
All right, warranty proposal from HDR.
Yep, HDR did our core area phase one project, this is just kind of the wrap-up work that's needed for it. It's for seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Good. Got a motion, a second for warranty work, any discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry, but I gotta, I gotta ask another quick question.
Here.
So if it's warranty work, uh, what are we paying eight thousand bucks for, Mary?
To work through it with the contractor, so the contractor.
Just basically a small construction admin on, on their warranty work, making sure that they.
Making sure that they replace the sidewalk that's cracked, and the driveways that are cracked, and.
It wasn't included in the original CIP contract.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, tree disposal site, page one eighty-seven.
Looking at Saturday, May twenty-second, from nine to three, at the old wastewater ponds.
Do we need to do anything, or?
Nope, it's already been posted, it's been out on textily, Facebook, et cetera.
Yep, looks really nice. All right, next is the sanitary sewer on the east side.
As part of that project, since it is in the wetlands, we will have to do a jurisdictional determination and a wetland delineation, so this would be with IMAG to do that kind of paperwork and survey work. For just under seven thousand dollars.
Was this the thing you said that we did before, is that right?
Like, you did before, but we, it was so long that we have to redo it?
That we have to redo it, yeah.
Okay.
So it's really just updating the report?
Is there a motion on that, please? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the water meter replacement project. You have a change order?
Yep, this change order just, uh, finalizes the final quantities. It is a deduct, for about seventeen hundred dollars.
I think we're still to the positive on all this, but, okay. Um, so we need a motion on that? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And then a pay application number two and final?
Move to approve.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, we have to go to executive session, is there anything else before we do that? And it's for potential litigation? So we have to adjourn?
Nope.
No?
Uh, motion to go into executive session for pending, discuss pending litigation, if it's to be eternal.
Somebody's second, okay.
Lisa, how long you expect this to?
Five minutes.
Okay.
Five is never five.